Good, okay. Call this meeting to order. Just a quick note, as you all know, if you're watching from home, you can leave comments on Facebook or YouTube, but you can also send emails to questions@middleborough.k12.ma.us. So the first item on our agenda, I'd like to, if you're able, to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next on the agenda is public comment. And just a quick heads up, we all know that we had a meeting last night to address specifically the mask mandate and the mask policy. So tonight, we'd like to focus on items that are on the agenda. If you have something that's related to an item on the agenda, please feel free to speak at that time. But if you have something that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to come up and speak, if you have something. Does anyone want to speak on anything not on the agenda? Okay, sure, yep.
Hi, good evening. My name is Donna Chain. I live in 45 Saddleworth Way. I'm here tonight, very quickly, to talk about the SRO position for John Graham. It's been brought to many of the parents' attention that John Graham would no longer be the SRO officer for the Middleborough High School, as well as other schools. We have reached out to the selectmen to ask if there's any way that we can go back, look at this position, and understand the importance of this position. As a parent, I am here to say that, in the seven years that I've been in this school system, John Graham has been here for three. He has changed the school for the better, from a safety perspective, and not only this school, but many of the schools in this system. There are several parents that are concerned about the safety going forward, based upon the culture of what's happening today outside of the school system. We believe that John Graham has a pulse on what is taking place outside of the school system, as well as inside of the school system. I'm the daughter of a New York City detective. One of the things that my father said that was extremely important when he was in his role was developing the rapport with the people in his area. When you take that away and put someone new in that position, it takes a while to develop that rapport. John Graham has worked hard to develop those relationships, not only with the administrators, not only with the teachers, but with the students, where students are comfortable approaching John, keeping him ahead of situations that are taking place within the school system. There are some other parents that are here tonight, just to speak on behalf of John Graham, but we felt, instead of making this into a big deal, that we can somehow come to you and see what we need to do as parents to make the town in Middleborough understand the importance of John Graham being in this school. And I think it's also important to note that none of us mean any disservice to any of the police officers in the town of Middleborough. They're all amazing individuals. We do believe that it took time for John to develop where he is, and someone just can't walk into those shoes, two weeks of training, and pick up where he's left off. I also have a note from Donnie Jamison, the former assistant principal at Middleborough High School. She was unable, obviously, to be here, because she no longer lives in Middleborough, but she asked me to read this on behalf of John Graham. She writes, "Good evening. As a former Middleborough High School assistant principal, who retired in June of 2020, I feel it's important to share my thoughts regarding the importance of allowing Lieutenant Graham to continue in his position as SRO. I will be brief and to the point. Lieutenant Graham has become woven into not only the high school community, but Middleborough Public Schools community. He has made strong connections with some of the most vulnerable students. His outreach to families has always been thoughtful and sincere. His understanding of juvenile law is flawless, and his counsel to administration has proven to be a huge asset on many occasions. He is an expert on school safety and helped make the new high school even safer with his knowledge and ideas. The students of Middleborough count on stability and deserve to see a trusted, respected police officer in their school, ready to be available for whatever the day may bring. Lieutenant Graham attends so many school events, games, meetings, I can't even list them all. It would be difficult to replace his level of commitment to the school district. I hope that the big picture will be examined and that he will continue his role as the SRO. Sincerely, Danielle Jamison." On that note, I just want to emphasize again, as parents, what can we do to continue to keep someone as John Graham in our school systems? I'd like to pass it on to Ron Parkinson, who'd like to say a few words.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. Bear with me, I'm a midnight guy, just got off of two doubles, so I'm running on fumes here, but I felt it was necessary to come here and support John. And like she said, I mean, she pretty much sealed the deal. It's very important, in these specialty positions, to build the trust in the collaboration between the faculty and the students, you know, the teachers, administration. He's done a wonderful job, and it's, I don't necessarily believe that this position is plug and play. I think it takes a special person. I think he's proven that. And just because he has the opportunity to be promoted, I don't think he should be penalized for the fact that, you know, he's got to step down from that position that he's earned, and he's done a great job at. And I hope somebody, you know, the right person takes consideration of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your advocacy and for speaking on that. I wonder, Mr. Lynch, could we get some context on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, thank you. Good evening to the members of the committee, to people in the, folks in the audience. Just by way of explanation, as it has been described to me by the chief of police and the town manager, there's a certain number of lieutenant positions that are available in the Middleborough Public Schools, all of them involving being around the actual station and having duties associated with the actual police station and the operation of the Middleborough Police Department. John Graham has been a sergeant in the Middleborough Public Schools. I don't disagree with anything that Donna Chain has said tonight, or anyone else. I do think that he, John Graham, was excellent at his position. We, through the ESER II budgeting position, tried to put in some money, or did put in some money, to see if we could petition the town manager and the selectmen to perhaps continue him in a lieutenant's role, in the school resource officer role. That we were, basically, we were told that that was not going to be the case, that that lieutenant's position is needed at the, at the police station, and that if he took that position, he was making a personal choice between continuing to be an SRO and going back to the police station on a full-time basis. Sergeant Graham and I have talked extensively on this. He's heartbroken, he'd love to continue, but it's a choice for him. With regard to his status and his pay, it's a considerable raise on his part. We offered to sort of cover that raise if we could, but again, the answer that came back from the chief was that the answer had been told to him that it was not possible to do. So this would be something that would be in the selectmen's hands, something that would be in the, through the town manager. It's not something that we, the school committee, can do, we could certainly endorse. The fact that John Graham was a very successful school resource officer, he made great connections with kids, that's what it's all about, we all know that, teaching, policing, anything. But at this point, there are so many lieutenants in Middleborough, and they're all at the police station, helping out the operation of the police department, and not SROs. So I know that Chief Perkins has been in contact with myself and Paul Branigan, at least at the school department, talking about a successor to John Graham in the office, with a training, training model being put in place, to try to train a new school resource officer. But we can't change the sort of organizational chart, if you will, at the police department. And that's not something that was allowed this year, as far as I know. And that is not a decision that, obviously, the school committee could make. So just, that's just by way of explanation.
Sure. Mr. Lynch, I want to give a chance for anyone on the committee to ask any questions, but I wanted to start with the question, you mentioned that the, we had put in some money in the ESER grant to cover this, if this were to have happened. Is that something that if the selectmen were to make a decision with the police department, that we could still cover that, or is that ship sailed?
That money was included in the budget and still in there, as far as I know, in the ESER II.
It, it was reallocated once we found out that we couldn't go towards, sorry.
Okay. But if we needed to, we could make it work.
Okay.
We'll tell you that.
We could do an amendment for the grant, but it would mean we'd have to take something that was in the grant and remove it.
Got it.
Which we did one time, we could probably do again, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Yeah. So, am I to understand that the chief was okay with this, and that you were okay with this, and then it went above your heads? Is that?
Ms. Farley, I cannot speak for the chief. I would tell you that initially, he was certainly advocating for it. So, but whether or not, once told that he couldn't do it, whether he continues to advocate for it, I can't say that.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yeah, Meg?
So is this something that parents or us, we should talk to selectmen about? Because it seems like it was their kind of decision. I know, obviously, he chose because of the money and whatnot, but.
I would say the question could certainly be asked of them. I was not involved in that process, so I'm not sure how that went. I'm not sure if it went through the town manager to the selectmen, or if it went to the town manager, I'm not sure, and I don't want to put anyone in a difficult position. So.
Ah, okay, that's a good point.
Message from the, from the chair, that we can't really have a discussion on an open comment.
Okay.
Because it's not on the agenda. So open, open discussion can be, we can take information, but we can't actually have a discussion yet, so.
So that was a point of order made by the chair, who's not able to be here tonight, but saying that we cannot have an open discussion about this. We could schedule it for a meeting on September 9th and make it an agenda item, and then have that public discussion at that time. So that was just a point of order from our, from our chairman.
And, Mr. Lynch, my sense is that the cat's out of the bag, and the information that might have been needed is, has been given, but given that, I guess we do have to cut off discussion on that, just for open meeting law purposes. But again, I thank, thank you for coming and speaking on that, and if there's any way we, as a committee, can help advocate, please email us, any information you think we should have. All right. Thank you. Is there anything else under public comment for things that are not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I'd move on to reports from school committee members. Does anyone have a report? No, seeing none, I actually have a report that I'd like to read real quick. I think I made a mistake last night, and I wanted a chance to set the record straight. This is not about reopening the masking discussion, I won't be talking about that. There was a gentleman that came in, he mentioned his son that was sick and couldn't, was really suffering under this process, and I think, I think maybe the way the discussion was headed, both among what I heard from the committee and myself, might have led this gentleman to believe that he was alone in his struggles, and I just wanted to say that I was a teenager with Hodgkin's lymphoma in high school, and I wanted nothing more than to just have a normal life and for no one to know what was going on with me. I told people I put nair on my head to cover up the fact that I lost my hair. I told people I had a cat scratch to cover up the fact that I had a surgical biopsy. I just didn't want anyone to know, and the last thing I wanted was to not be normal and to be, you know, taken out of school, so I just kept doing it. And so I just wanted an opportunity to say, and I know he's not here, but to, I believe his name is Abby, I think that's right, that, that we hear you, and as a, as a school district, and just as individuals, I think it's our job to stick up for every person that is entitled to a public education, and we will do that. And so I just wanted to just mention that, in case that person happens to be watching this. So that's it. So if there's no other reports from school committee members, actually, I'm sorry, no, I really want to bring this up. I heard through a mutual acquaintance that last night, there was a threat of violence against the school committee. I have reported this to the police chief, and from what I hear, no specific name was mentioned, the threat was made against the committee as a whole. And I just want to express myself how terrible and weak and small-minded I think it is to threaten violence in a situation like this. And I just want all of us to vow that, no matter what our opinions are, what our differences of opinion are, that we can do this like adults, and we don't have to do stuff like that. And I personally, no matter how much I disagree with anyone on any issue, I would never want you to feel threatened, or feel that your family's being threatened, or feel that your property is being threatened. And I maintain that I will, I will always, always stay that way, no matter how much I disagree with someone. So I wanted to bring that up, because it's been weighing pretty heavily on me since I found out, and I think that we can all agree, I think everyone can agree that we don't need to go there. Okay. So that's it. So I think unless there's any other reports from school committee members, we can turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you, members of the committee, members of the audience. Tonight, I just have a couple of comments on COVID-19 reopening. A lot was said last night, and the masking policy was reinstated last night, as you know. So we will welcome all of our masked students back to our schools on September 1. Right now, in the, in the town of Middleborough, we have zero school-aged students who currently have COVID. That's a positive. We also have signed up for the test and stay program, which is a testing initiative intended for asymptomatic close contacts of individuals with confirmed COVID-19. And this testing program will allow asymptomatic close contacts to remain in school if they receive these individual rapid antigen binax now tests each day, and test negative for a period of seven days, and they need to follow other guidelines. So there'll be more that comes out on that, that will only be done with parental permission. And otherwise, if a student is in close contact, they'll have to follow the traditional parameters for close contacts and be removed from school. So that's an opportunity for us to keep kids in school, which I think is a good thing.
Sure.
Just a question on that. I think one of the concerns that I've been hearing a little bit, and maybe this can come up as you start to figure out the process of it, so it's just to have it as in the back of your head. Permission would be granted the day of the test, but my concern and others would be, would it be some sort of form sent home at the beginning of the school year that sort of blanket approves a test that maybe a parent didn't know that that was happening that day? So I think people just kind of want to hear and be assured that they're not just sort of happening, and they didn't realize it was happening that day, or whatever that might look like.
Through you, Mr. Vice Chair, we are going to do something similar to that, much like we do with press releases, and people not taking pictures of students and things such as that. We've had different school systems that have done different things, and a couple of them, for example, I saw CCONC today that is doing sort of a test, a day-by-day, if it's a situation, get permission from a parent. Old Colony Votech is doing a sign-off for the year. So I think we'll be able to do that. We still have to work out the details. The application weren't due, weren't in till last week, and the deadline was the 20th, and we've been approved. We have not had a lot of information back. Our nurse leader has been on vacation this week. I spoke to her this afternoon. She was shopping with her daughter to try to get a little more information, but we will be meeting and talking when we return to school Monday, and have an opportunity to meet with principals, and she's going to have to train school nurses on these tests and go forward with that program. But it really is an opportunity for people who have close contacts in school, and what we did last year was we sent all those kids home. And we hope to not be able to do that if those kids test negatively, or negative, on a consistent basis.
So through you, Mr. Chair, so perhaps maybe a form that says, I give permission, I don't give permission, or I opt out, or I would prefer a phone call for any instance where that was necessary, and so that everyone is just on the same page, there's transparency throughout the school year, and there's not, and there's no blindsided feelings.
Good suggestion, and there'll be more on this at the September 9th meeting.
Yeah, just like I said, just to have in the back of our heads that.
And much more detail. At the start of the school, if we do not have this in place, we'll have to operate under the traditional contract tracing piece, so.
Thank you.
So that sort of describes minimally, at best, the test and stay program, which, and the alternative is, if you don't adopt the test and stay, is that you have to follow the contact tracing, and you have to send home kids traditionally. And we want to keep, keep kids in school. The whole idea, even with a masking policy, is to keep kids back in school five days a week. Social distancing has been diminished, a requirement has been diminished in the schools, and we have to do what we can within our structures, to the extent possible. But as I mentioned last night, we don't want to take away classrooms, such as gymnasiums and things such as that, away from those teachers, because we don't want to de-emphasize their importance, certainly, as we move forward. So, any further question? Sorry.
Just two questions came up online. What type of masks are going to be acceptable? And then is there anything that we're going to do to make students, teachers, staff comfortable when there's no air conditioning and it's hot?
Well, right now, we have some air conditioning in some of our schools, and it's warm, it's warm every year in our schools, and we'll try to get as many fans and air circulation going on as possible. Jim Hutchinson, our facilities director, is very much involved in that. We have air circulating systems in every room, air purifiers. We do have fans that go in the hallways to try to get air moving through the hallways and air moving through the schools. Every HVAC unit in each classroom is used, and it circulates air, and just like we were last year. So there'll be some warm days, there's no doubt about it. There'll be some cold days, and we have to sort of roll with it, but I think we made out pretty well last year, in terms of our ability to do this. We did have a couple of hot days in June. If you remember, we had a heat wave in one week in June, near the end, which was, which was a difficult situation in some of our classrooms, there's no doubt about it. So we'll need to move forward with that, no doubt about it, so. Was there a question I missed?
And then, what kind of masks are acceptable?
The masking, we're looking for cloth masks, and we'd not see-through mesh, we're looking for cloth masks that are consistent with, with protecting all of our students, and I think that's, that's really important, so.
And then there was just one more that just came in. Can you talk about what lunch is going to look like if there's no social distancing and students aren't wearing masks?
Lunches, we're going to socially distance to the furthest extent possible within our structures. So if we're not using the gymnasium here at the high school, we're going to be using our traditional cafeteria. So students will be increased exposure, there's no doubt about it, at lunches. And that's sometimes difficult, but we don't want, we don't want, it's difficult to understand when you say, okay, we're going to masking, and then we're going to allow for students to take down the mask, but we are going to allow the students to take down masks at mask breaks, when they eat snacks, and when they eat their lunch in school, or when they go outside, at any time. So we have relaxed some of those social distancing requirements for next year, so, or for this coming year.
Okay, I think that, those are all the questions.
I could just piggyback on that last question. The, it sounds like it's a great thing that lunch can go back to some semblance of normal, because I think I heard a lot from parents that lunch was difficult for children this year. I guess my question is, do we almost have built-in, for lack of a better word, clusters, just because of the way the tables are set up, and kids are going to be sitting in assigned seats?
They're going to be sitting at lunch tables, and traditional lunch tables. We'll, we'll separate as much as we can in the, in the space that we have, to the extent possible, again. If we have outbreaks, we're going to have to deal with those.
Right.
No doubt about it.
And that's the benefit of the test and stay program as well, is that we have some method of not sending everyone back.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And hopefully, the masks will mitigate, you know, the rest of the interaction throughout the day, but when those students eat, obviously, the mask comes off.
Right.
But like I said, we're going to keep our traditional cafeterias this year.
Yep.
And, and work with those. So until such time as we have a situation where it proves to be a real negative building-wide situation, then we'd definitely have to change course, no doubt about it, so.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Moving on to a school reopening, as you know, our teachers come back on Monday, August 30th, we have convocation. They have two days of professional development, August 30th and 31st. The professional development is building-based. There'll be a convocation addressed by myself, also by Sarah Hickey, by Dr. Melanie Gates, and by Carolyn Lyons, for the entire group. It will be done remotely this year. I hemmed and hawed about this, and it was a difficult decision for me. I know the optics could be positive or negative, depending on whatever we did, but the CDC guidelines do say, again, to the furthest extent possible, to mitigate and to social distance to the furthest extent possible, and, and trying to avoid nearly 500 people in one room here. I think this is a possibility, and we could do it remotely, and I think that that's the way to go. That was my decision this year, my individual decision, moving on forward. So first day of students is September 1st for grades one through 12, and they'll come to school the first, second, and third, and then everyone will have the four-day weekend. We also have, our first day for kindergarten is September 2nd. That's obviously due to just trying to get our first through 12 on the buses going, and an additional day for kindergarten prep and kindergarten readiness. And first day of pre-K orientation is September 3rd, and the first day for pre-K is Monday, or September 8th, excuse me, September 8th, that's the first day for pre-K. So those are our first days, those are our reopening dates. The buildings are ready, the buildings are prepared, and certainly, we're ready to go, our facilities are ready to go. From what I understand, from, from communication from building principals, that the, the teachers are excited, they've been in their rooms, they're getting ready. We've had a lot of activity in the last couple of weeks, especially, and we're ready for reopening for this year, and, you know, hopefully, we can, we can get through this year, five days in school, which to me is exciting, the most exciting part about this year, to be really excited about a normal school year. But it is, other than masking, we're going to try to make this year as, as normal as possible for our kids, and I think that that's incumbent upon us to do that. So, so we are going to, we're going to reopen as normal, five days a week, with masks. So we'll go from there. Any questions on school reopening? If not, I'll move on to, we have a special guest tonight, Mrs. Rebecca Bagnell is here tonight, and she is our food services director, and we have had her as a possibility a couple of times, but schedules have been such that we haven't been able to schedule it, so she's here tonight to present an update for the food services for the Middleborough Public Schools. Welcome, Ms. Bagnell.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a quick update about the food service program going forward this year. The USDA will be providing free school meals again this year to all students. This will include breakfast and lunch. Snacks will be sold again this year, and that is for. and that is for first grade through 12th. We've never sold them before in the kindergarten, so it's going back to normal in that respect. Let's see here. The snacks are between 50 cents and a dollar, and parents can utilize the online My School Bucks tool to put money online as needed, or they can send money with their children. Menus are available online. I put them on today, so you can check those out. And then, something that's pretty important for our department and for our district as a whole is the free and reduced applications. I know a lot of people didn't fill them out last year because they, the students received the free meals, but we're asking that you, or strongly encouraging that you fill those out because they are directly tied to grant funding for our district. Also, for the high school, if you qualify for free or reduced lunch, you will qualify for free AP and standardized testing that you would have otherwise had to pay for. So it's really important for us as far as the Title I funding and other funding that we get as a district based on our free and reduced percentage. Lastly, we are currently looking for substitute cafeteria workers, so if anyone is looking for an opportunity to have school hours, you can go to school spring to apply, or you can call me. And that's it.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Just had a quick question regarding what the lunches will look like. I know that last year was very different, and that it was bagged lunches, and they sort of grabbed and go, but is that going to be more of a cafeteria, like walking up, getting your tray, back-to-where-we-were kind of lunch?
Yes. We were definitely limited last year. It was hard to serve a lot of the favorite meals, and then put them in a brown bag and ship them off to a different part of the school. So yes, this year, we are looking forward to going back to how we were doing things prior to COVID.
Thank you.
Probably the only thing would be, you know, condiments. We used to have the bottles out for the kids to get their own ketchup, and we'll, we'll just be replacing those with packets. But other than that, we don't have a lot of changes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Can you just, how do people contact you if they have any questions?
Yeah, so my, my information's all on the, the district website. If they want to send me an email, or, or call me directly at my office, I'm always there. Otherwise, I can, I will return calls. And yeah, I'm happy to talk about anything to do with the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. And I just had a question for you about the, the availability, what we have to choose from, and how menus get built. I guess, explain to me like I'm five. How do, how do we get to the point, or how do we get to the menus we have?
Okay. So we definitely have, when the children are younger, you know, the fan favorites like the chicken patty and the cheeseburger, and the chicken nuggets and the pizza. We really tend to stay with the basic meals that are, that are kid-friendly, but at the same time, we are required to serve certain food groups. So vegetables, for example, there are five types of vegetables, and people say to me all the time, ugh, you're serving, you know, sweet potato fries, you know, John Graham. Sergeant Graham is a big one to be, you know, get rid of the sweet potato fries. But I have to serve an orange, an orange vegetable once a week. Same with baked beans. You know, we have to serve beans once a week as a vegetable. So, you know, I, it's just pinto beans here. The kids aren't going to eat those as a side, so we tend to go with the Boston baked beans as a, as, you know, as a side. But, so a lot of the vegetables are chosen for us by the, by the state and by the USDA and how we build our menus. So the Department of Nutrition really tells us, you know, these are the five vegetable groups you have to serve, and 51% of all of our, our grains have to be whole wheat, a whole grain. So, you know, when they get a chicken patty, it's not going to be like going to KFC. It is going to be 51% whole grain. It's going to be baked. It's not going to be fried. Mr. Lynch is another one that would love to have the, you know, the fried, the nice fried chicken patty instead of the baked. But, you know, our hands are tied where they do want us to serve the healthy foods. And you know what? The kids, they do like them. It's not like going to McDonald's, but, you know, they are really happy when it's chicken nugget day.
Gotcha. All right. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Rebecca? No? All right. Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll move on?
Yeah, we'll move on.
Yep.
To facility use. As the school committee knows, the school committee policies that govern community use are KF and KFR, and we put them on hold last year because of COVID and because of the pandemic. And we said that we were not going to allow community use of our buildings because of the significant danger that presented by bringing people from outside the building into the building during off-hours. That is something that I have received a note from both Middleborough Travel Basketball and the SSBL, or the Sunday School Basketball League, with a number of signatures, upwards of 250, supporting the use of our facilities again. I also received a note from Colleen Mosley, who's the Director of Cheerleading for the Mitchell Memorial Club, which is a private club in town that sponsors youth sports, the private club that sponsors youth cheerleading and football, and they're looking to use facilities also. So the discussion or question before the committee tonight is, do you want to sort of unfreeze this with parameters, with conditions, if you will, and allow community use during the weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, or during the afternoon with, and I would just throw out the suggestion, potentially some additional cleaning time charged to the facility use, if it's something that is needed. So, and I, I would throw that to the committee for a discussion.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely agree that I think we all felt that it was, it was more detrimental to our, our community last year to be, you know, not allowing these things, but it was, there was no choice. And I feel like we do have a choice now, and we need to get our kids back and active, and a healthy child is an active child. So I'm all for getting them back in the gym.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah?
Question from Superintendent.
Sure.
So what kind of risks do you think there are at this point for having these programs come back in?
Well, I think that with the cleaning pieces that we have, the electrostatic sprayers and the mitigation strategies that we had in place with cleaning last year, we did really, really well, and by the end of the year, had very, very few cases. And we were at the point where I think that a couple of these programs use it extensively on the weekends, and they have custodians assigned to them. They pay for custodians. So if we had some additional cleaning, or with the electrostatic cleaning of the bleachers and the gymnasium, and we required students who, much like we did with the MIAA, if it's an indoor sport, they have to wear masks. And, and people who are in the audience need to wear masks. So as long as they comply with those things, I don't have a problem with giving it a go. With, right now, it would be, I think the travel basketball starts up fairly soon. I think the cheerleading starts up fairly soon, if not already. I think they start on the outside. And then, Sunday School Basketball, I think, starts a little bit later, maybe November or so, and goes through December and January. So, I mean, my opinion is, I, I have no problem giving it a try. I agree with Ms. Farley that, that we took something away from our younger people last year who, who really need it, and, and who would normally be playing basketball Saturday, or playing basketball all Sunday, or cheerleading every single afternoon, late afternoon in the gym. So I think that we need to continue to provide those opportunities, and I think that I don't have a problem with it myself, as Superintendent.
Any other questions or comments on that? No. Hearing none, the Vice Chair would entertain a motion to reinstate policies KFR and KF with any inside use consistent with indoor masking protocols in place and with an hour buffer after for custodial cleaning.
No.
So moved?
All right. Motion by Greg, second by Meg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Passes.
Good. I think the community will be very pleased with that. And again, something else that would need to be revisited if it became an issue, and would be revisited at this board. So just so you know. Next is a school choice update. I had conversations with Mr. Brannigan this past couple of weeks here, when the population of the high school was continued to increase, and he quoted the movie Field of Dreams, and he said, if you build it, they will come. And they have come, and our high school population is burgeoning. It is increasing, and we're happy to say that although you allowed 30 spots at the high school, we've capped it, we've, we've filled it with 23, and, and that's it. That is over now. And we'd need to revisit that next year with considerable thought in terms of the high school and the numbers in the high school. Nichols Middle School had some openings, 30 openings, and we've filled that with 11. And the elementary school right now, there's 20 spots open. We have 17 filled, and we have three waiting lists, and we've just got to make sure that we can fit them into classrooms, and we will do that. The MECC had five openings, and we have two students who've chosen to come to kindergarten. Keeping in mind that our foundation budget was increased, or our money was increased this year by $267 or $266,000 in school choice money. So although it does increase our class sizes slightly, it does pay for a number of teachers, and it does bring financial favor to the district, there's no doubt about it. But we need to be careful that we're not overcrowding our schools with students who are from other communities. And we need to, to watch that because that is something that we'll take serious consideration, especially at the high school level. Because anytime you do build a high school, numbers do increase, but we've seen a significant increase in well-open the year with about 875 students, 880 students, thereabouts, perhaps a little higher. So that is something for the high school we need to revisit. At the high school, traditionally, we had, we had five open spots for those seniors that might move out of town, that might want to stay in the high school. And that is something that we might look at for next year, where they're already enrolled. But we also have to be careful of school choice laws. And we had a lot of systems, a lot of school systems had sort of taken the school choice laws and sort of made them their own, and made their own conditions. And probably a year and a half ago, Dr. Gates, a year and a half ago, the Department of Elementary Ed revisited school choice and made it very clear on the parameters of school choice, and, and changed the game for us because we had made some Middleborough modifications, if you will, that were not consistent with the law. So shame on us, but we're, we're living by the law now. So, and that's the school choice update. If there are any questions on that?
Do you feel that the current numbers are appropriate for what we have?
Well, I think at the high school, we need to revisit that. I think, and we certainly are, have done some favorable things. I see Heidi Lutender in the office, Principal at Nichols. She created some additional teams this year, which had brought class sizes down. Class size was a major concern at her, especially at the seventh and eighth grade level, especially the eighth grade, I think. So that eighth grade moving up to the high school, we'll have to see. With reduced numbers going over to VP because the kids want to come here, that increases the high school population. So, and when the design enrollment of this school, now granted, there's, there's more classrooms and more spaces that we can fit kids in, but the design enrollment was 720 for this building, because they convinced, and they were convinced through 10 growth models, that Middleborough in 10 years would have 684 students in this building. And that was in 2015, Paul? So in 2015, they said we'd have 684 students here in 2025. Well, it's 2021, 2022, and we have 800 and almost 90 students, I think, if you, if that thumb was right, right, Paul? Yeah. So we do really need to look at that.
Yeah.
We can fit them all in. We have spaces for them, because they don't account for the gym being three classrooms at one time, so that there's three classrooms in there. And there's other spaces, Black Box Theater, and, and places like the music room, and that aren't counted as homerooms technically. So we can fit the students in. It's not that we're overcrowded at all, but if the population continues to grow. And I think that we just need to be careful with our decisions about school choice and how it grows.
And so when you say we need to revisit, we're talking about next year when we're setting our numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say so, yeah. We can't, we can't, the students we've taken in, we can't, once they're, it's a stay-put clause, it's called. We can't, we can't move them out. So, once we have them in.
Sure. And just context, if anyone's hearing this for the first time, we already voted to establish these numbers earlier.
Yep.
And this, this update is just where we're at with that.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have some summer program summaries, as I described to the committee briefly earlier, sort of off, off-camera. We had really five major summer programs. Two of the larger ones are the Summer Splash Program, that was created this year, thanks to the work of Dr. Melanie Gates. And so that was a program that we had, and we also had the Extended School Year Program, and that was through Carolyn Lyons and her organization, and Trish Peretti. And so those two programs are going to present tonight, and on September 9th, we'll have the Music Reboot Program, the Credit Recovery Program, and the Athletic Program, providing a summary of what their activities were like. So tonight, I guess we'll go first with Kristy Goldman and the Summer Splash Program. Kristy, welcome. Kristy is a teacher at the Mary Kay Good School.
Thank you.
But she took on this project this summer, and she was excited to take the project on this summer. She had a lot of experience in the past running a summer program and working through a summer program called Project Contemporary Competitiveness, or PCC, which we all know very well. And so she was excited to get involved with this program, and, and has a bit of a slideshow this evening to show us. And Kristy, welcome.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Lynch, and to the entire school committee for having me tonight. It's my pleasure to be in front of you to share the amazing success of the Summer Splash Enrichment Program offered at the Henry B. Berkland Elementary School this year. For five weeks, we offered day camp with fun classes where students explored STEM, play, literacy, arts, social-emotional topics, and health. That spells splash. Free of cost to Middleborough families, including breakfast and lunch for every Summer Splasher. I am happy to report that this summer was an incredible learning experience for all, thanks to the hard work of dozens of members of the Middleborough Public Schools community. I'd like to take a moment to specifically thank as many people as possible for helping ensure the success of our summer program. So bear with me. First, a thank you to Sarah Hickey, Paula Reyna, and the entire business office for securing the grant that made our program so accessible to families. Second, a thank you to Rebecca Bagnell and the cafeteria staff who fed our students two meals a day for five weeks, free of charge. Third, a thank you to the custodial staff and maintenance crew of the elementary complex who made our program run seamlessly and never complained about spilled milk cartons in the gym. Fourth, a thank you to Marie Coughlin, our Summer Splash Nurse, who helped our students stay safe and healthy. Next, a thank you to Mr. Lynch and Dr. Melanie Gates, who created the vision and concept behind Summer Splash, and trusted myself and my co-coordinator, Scott Dawson, with bringing it to life. Finally, and most importantly, there are no words to describe the gratitude I have for our incredible staff members. We truly had the most positive and hardworking people to support our students this summer. Our aides, Christine Buchant, Stacy Card, David Hall, Carolyn Johnson, Sarah Landers, Sandra Maloney, and Alyssa Sparduti were the all-hands-on-deck crew we needed to keep our program moving forward. Our teachers, Tara Barrett, Tara Benner, Stacy Dawson, Emma Del Vecchio, Matthew Dion, Lexi Dolan Silva, Beth Evans, Jen Gorman, Brittany Lezier, Mike Lapino, Sarah Marcus, Samantha Murray, Melissa Odie Morrison, Carly Paling, Ashley Reardon, Courtney Setcher, and Ashley Tassino were abundantly creative, inclusive, and encouraging to our students, and were truly the heart of our success. So thank you to all. At the closing of our five weeks together, we sent, sent out a survey to the over 200 families we worked with this summer. Given it was our first summer, we were looking for feedback on what we can do to make Summer Splash even better in summers to come. We received 70 responses to our survey, and the overwhelming majority of families were pleased with their summer with us. One respondent wrote, "My son was very reluctant to attend Summer Splash. He did not want me to sign him up. After the very first day, he was mad I only signed him up for three weeks. He absolutely loved going to Summer Splash every day. I felt it was a perfect integration of academic skill and fun." Another respondent said, "It was a great, positive experience. All the adults there were amazing. I can't say enough positive things to you to encourage you that it was worth every ounce of stress, craziness, or tension there might have been behind the scenes. I didn't see any of that. Only my happy child, who loved every minute he was there, and begged to go early and not to be picked up early." So we also received some constructive feedback about new courses we could offer in the future, and ways to make arrival and dismissal flow better. So thank you for that. The survey included six main questions, and I'd like to share the results with you. You can see them on the screen, and I will read them as well. So the first question was about our courses, and 94.3% of families were were satisfied or completely satisfied with the variety of courses offered at Summer Splash. Eighty-two point nine percent of families were satisfied or completely satisfied with the strategies and ideas their student was taught to develop social skills and emotional awareness at Summer Splash. A big focus of our camp this year was mindfulness. We discussed topics such as communication, cooperation, and kindness with our students through interactive games and discussions, and they really enjoyed that. Next, ninety-five point seven percent of families agreed that their student developed positive peer-to-peer relationships in a safe environment at Summer Splash. This was hugely important to us. Again, ninety-five point seven percent of families agreed that their student developed positive relationships with adults and staff members at Summer Splash, which was really cool considering our staff members make up all five buildings within our district. We had at least one staff member represented from every building. So even our youngest students got to meet and love and respect some of our high school teachers, which was a very fun experience for them. Ninety-eight point six percent of families agreed that Summer Splash staff members communicated openly and regularly and were available to answer their questions. And lastly, the point I'm most excited about is that ninety percent of the families that responded to our survey said they would enroll their students in Summer Splash 2022, should it exist, even if there was a cost associated with the enrollment. Given that we could not provide it for free, families were so enthusiastic about the work that was done and would like to enroll their child again. By the numbers alone, it was widely agreed that Summer Splash was an awesome time, but we wanted to be sure to share the experience of the most important people involved, the Summer Splasher themselves. A huge thank you to Sean Cicliano, who helped create this visual summary of some of our favorite memories of Summer Splash.
I literally made probably like sixteen friends already here, and I'm kind of sad that it's going to start ending, but I'm kind of excited for the school year. So you get dropped off and then we wait until everyone gets there and we have breakfast. And then they do alphabets and those are different breathing things that you can do, like if you like get mad or something.
Butterfries.
Dolphin.
We usually would go to our first session and Fairy Tale STEM, we would read fairy tales and then do a STEM project with it, like for Little Red Riding Hood, we made a kazoo for the grandma to communicate to Little Red Riding Hood when she was in trouble.
My first session today was puzzles and games. It was really fun. We got to do a puzzle solving challenge and the first one, the first three to be done at your table got a sticker.
So the activities I've done was cornhole and backyard games and marching pants and So it's like math and art at the same time, like we do like symmetry and stuff and it's really fun and the teacher is really nice.
And the recesses would be either on MKG Playground or HBV Playground. And then we would also get to talk to our friends and make new friends.
The best thing about Summer Splash is having recess and making new friends.
We did really, I learned a lot in chemistry, like a lot. And I'm going into sixth and I think that will prepare me really well for sixth. And we got to do like elephant toothpaste and we got to learn what beakers are and all different things.
Uh, backyard games. Um, it was technically like a mix between like every other sport, like it was, it was
I learned about mandelas and like, like you can fold papers all different ways to make them like look like really cool. And you can learn different, like all different math and stuff like to go with it. So I thought that was really cool.
In third year, I read a book and I made a hockey house.
Thank you. So as you can see, they had fun too. So everyone's perspective is included and thank you for allowing me to share with you the success of our first summer of Summer Splash here in Middleborough.
Anyone have any questions? Yeah, Meg?
So a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for putting this all together and your hard work. Clearly it shows.
Thank you.
And thanks to your team. Were there any, this came from the virtual world, so were they just wanted to know if there were any cases of COVID during the Summer Splash?
No.
No? Okay. And is there any thought, and maybe this is more for Mr. Lynch for explaining this to kindergarten, so that next year I can send my kids?
We all have really, really big dreams for Summer Splash 2022, especially me. And so those conversations are still in the works, but more information hopefully coming as soon as humanly possible because I'm hoping to have fun next summer too. Thank you so much.
And we're hoping the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed continue funding these because we matched the grant with a federal grant. So we were able to do it, all of our summer programs outside of the athletic program for gratis.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Just had a quick question, and I'm sorry if you said this in the beginning, but how many total kids signed up for this? And then how many survey responses did you get back?
Sure. So originally, when we began the Summer Splash enrollment, we were extremely overwhelmed. In just three days of having open enrollment, we received two hundred and sixty-eight survey responses of people signing up. That didn't end up being the exact number of students who attended, give or take people who ended up with other plans or, you know, some of our classes filled up. So any given week, we had about a hundred to one hundred fifty kids throughout the summer, which was our full capacity, what we could take with the teachers we had. And we received seventy survey responses in our end of program survey.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no other questions?
Yep. Kristi, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You and Scott did a great job. And thank you to Melanie Gates for putting this together and organizing and working with those two, especially initially, because they were initially nervous, it was their first foray into sort of a, you know, administration, if you will. So thank you. And now we have our Extended School Year Program and Carolyn Lyons and Trish Ferretti. Carolyn Lyons, as you know, is our PPS Director. Trish Ferretti is a preschool teacher, but is also the coordinator of the Extended School Year Program. It's held at the MEK each year and they're just going to sort of bring us up to speed on this summer. I know they've done an evaluation, an extensive evaluation, and their full results of that are not in yet. It's quite, quite a comprehensive evaluation and I think they'll mention that tonight. So, welcome.
Hello, how are you? I have to take my glasses off, so they're too fogging up. Thank you, everyone, for having us back. I think I was here two years ago. I am Tricia Ferretti, for those of you who don't know me. I teach at the MEK, I teach in the preschool, and this was my fifth year as the coordinator for ESY program alongside Carolyn Lyons.
Actually, I'm sorry to, sorry to interrupt them, just for the folks at home, can you move that in front of you a little bit closer?
Oh, sure.
Yep. Yep, thank you.
Is that better?
That's, yeah, thank you.
So we, we had a very full program. I'm kind of trying to figure out how I want to, after the splash video, that was so fun. But so ours, our program was a little different in terms of structure, but it was still very full and very fun. So our full program for ESY is for students who have diagnosed disabilities and it's structured on their IEP. So that is something that we have from Monday through Thursday, from nine to one. We had eighty-five full program students. So those students came ranging from three up to post-grad. So we had ages three to twenty-two, twenty-one this year, because they'll age out at twenty-two. So we had, I'm sorry, I have glasses for this. So we had eighty-five full program students. We also offered tutoring for those children who had tutoring for math or ELA on their IEP. We had fifty additional students receiving tutoring. We had three tutors in total. One of the tutors did work remotely for some of the students who did not feel, their families did not feel they wanted them to come into the, into the classroom. So we were able to do that. So now when we look at the staffing for that, myself, and we had an office assistant, and we did have the nurse leader who was able to be in our program, which, which was a new part, I think, that Carolyn had kind of worked for that before. We used to have a sub-nurse kind of come in and learn, have to get coordinated with all the medical, the medicine that came in and the family care plan, no, the medical plans, the medical plans for the medicine, sorry. So having Paula McNasco already know all of that was such a seamless transition for us, so that was super helpful. We had eight teachers and we had thirty ESPs. We also had related service providers. So the children who, if they were receiving speech therapy, physical therapy, or occupational therapy. We also had a school adjustment counselor on hand, Monday through Thursday. We also had a, our district RBT, which is a registered behavior technician. And basically, that was the group of us running this program. You know, one thing that we weren't able to do last year because of COVID that we were able to do this year was to get our high school and our post-grad students back out into the community. They were able to, you know, using the mini buses, they went to Wellspring, which is the therapeutic animal farm, that they were able to go for two days. They went two days during the week and then every day, they would come over, a group of students would come over to the high school and use the athletic room. So that was, and that was very successful. They would, we were able to work with Rebecca and she was super helpful. We would just tell the, you know, cafeteria in the morning, we need so-and-so many bag lunches. So the students would go down, get their bag lunch, they'd get on the bus, they'd go over, they'd have their workout, they would have their lunch or vice versa, I'm not sure how they did it. And then they would have the transportation, you know, pick them up from there. And I have to say, because I know she's not on here, I think I became best friends with the transportation coordinators this summer. I don't think I even fully understood as a person who is a special ed teacher, who has to set up transportation for families. I know I'm that person who will say like, oh, hey, I need to change this route. I really got, I asked for a sit-down because I needed to really understand it. So I have to say thank you to both Mary Jane and Judy, because they worked with me every day, daily, changing things and to make accommodations for when our families needed it. So it was a super successful summer. It was super busy. We were shorter some of staff than maybe we had wanted in the beginning, but everyone that was there just worked, worked their hearts out. You know, that's, that's the community of a summer, of this unique summer program. So yeah, I was really fortunate to be a part of it.
Carolyn?
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. She's very humble, so I'm going to give you a little more meat on the bone because this program, which has been in existence for over thirty years in Middleborough, is a program of individualized learning plans for eighty-five different students in a full program. So to do that on the fly, really with two weeks between when the school year ends and when the program begins is no small feat. Tricia Ferretti is a huge reason why this program is as successful as it is. Everything from individually planning kits and supplies to overseeing what's happening in all of the classrooms. Typically, we run about ten classrooms. This year, we ran eight. And it's not because our enrollment declined, it was just because we did have staffing shortage. This is going on around the state, it's not specific to Middleborough. So staffing has been, you know, an ongoing concern and the magic of a program like this is the consistency of our own special educators continuing to provide services to our students. We're very lucky to have Tricia, she's been, did you say five years?
Yeah.
Yeah, five years. Five years, and I can tell you, in the time that I've seen Tricia's hands on this program, I can draw a straight line to improvement with each successive year. In fact, the nursing decision came largely from feedback we received from parents that there was some inconsistency when we would have a sub-nurse come in and needing new med orders or delivering medications or even just understanding a seizure plan or, you know, that's a lot of information to coordinate. Paula McNasco was absolutely fantastic managing that with us as she was all school year. I wanted to see if there's anything else in tutoring. I wanted to just make a point about tutoring. One of, we learned a lot of things in COVID and one of the things that we learned during the summer of 2020 where we were also open was that tutoring services, when they were virtual, were actually more effective in their delivery and in some cases desired by families because it gave them flexibility of scheduling. So in this case, the tutoring students weren't necessarily opted in. We had tutor, we had students that were earmarked for tutoring in person because the virtual experience was not effective for them and that was a decision made by their team. And then we also continued our virtual tutoring because it was one of our lessons learned from 2021. And then I just wanted to, to further piggyback on the full complement of services, it's not just classroom instruction that's happening, you're seeing discrete related services provided in pull-out and push-in models, speech and language pathology, physical therapy, occupational therapy, behavioral intervention through a registered behavior technician. These are complex, complex services, complex expertise, and we're tremendously fortunate to have the staff that we have. So by all accounts, I would also consider this summer a wild success. These were meaningful learning experiences for our children. It was socialization, it was in person. This program didn't shut down for any period of time. And most of all, community-based access, which I know was important to our community. So as I told you, this program's been in existence for a really long time and that's because it is a required component of what we do as a public school system. It is not an optional program. I share this with you so that, you know, you can have a fuller picture of what ESY is as opposed to say something like Splash, which is tremendous and wonderful, and I can't wait to talk a little bit about that because I think it's an awesome opportunity for our district. But Extended School Year is, you know, kind of affectionately known as our special education program in the summertime, but it's not a program that all special education students access. If you think of your population as special education students, it hovers around twenty percent of your population. The students who qualify for Extended School Year are about twenty percent of that twenty percent. So that is a very small number compared to the rest of the special education community here in Middleborough. And the, the reason that is so is because the criteria for Extended School Year is to prevent substantial regression of skills, right? It's not because it would benefit students, because that would, we'd welcome all three thousand if that were the case.
It's not because it would benefit students, because that would, we'd welcome all three thousand if that were the case. So this year, we have embarked on a program evaluation of our extended school year program. I can't wait for it to be complete so that I can present it to you in color detail with all of our data and graphs as well. We did conduct surveys of staff and our families, and we will be conducting student data analysis, not just on the metrics of what the program is, but on student actual performance in September, to look at that regression data, to decide, are we calibrated right? Middleborough runs a six-week extended school year program, which is objectively longer than most of our neighboring communities. So one of the questions is, you know, is this program long enough? Should it be longer? Should it be shorter? And we're going to be looking at these metrics to determine, you know, any decisions, because we make those data-driven decisions on a regular basis. We'll be engaging in focus groups to discuss planning, brainstorming ideas, looking at some of our existing programs, like our partnership with Middleborough High School. We have a high school intern, we did not run it this year because of COVID, but in the past, we've always had high school interns work in our program. These are typically young, bright students who have a hope of teaching oftentimes, and I'm proud to tell you, we've actually hired students who have been an intern in the program and gone on to college, and then become special ed teachers for us right here in town, which is always a special moment. But so, programs like that we're taking a look at, as well as our peer, peer model program, where we have model peers in our classrooms to model appropriate communication and other skills. So that's really kind of, in a nutshell, what I wanted to share tonight. I want to leave you with one kind of parting thought. I'm just getting into the data, and I've just kind of gone through the entire survey, and I want to share one statistic with you. We asked families what, now, this is just the E S Y families, what their students are doing outside of this program in terms of other programs. And over ninety percent of the people that responded to our survey told us, there is no other program. There's piecing the puzzle here in town, which is a wonderful A B A-based program. But there is no comprehensive program, and this is something that has been a focus of conversation with our C P A C, that children with special education needs, whether they're, you know, mild to, to moderate, to, you know, to severe, they don't have the same number of options that typically developing peers have. So a program like Splash is a true gift to this community and could serve a tremendous function in not just meeting the needs of all students, but in particular, when you think about the special education population, that eighty percent of the twenty percent, that eighty percent of the twenty percent that don't qualify. So that's sort of how I'll leave it. I'll leave you clip, like, cliffhanging on for the results.
For the results of the summary.
And I can't wait to, to tell you about what we decide and how we continue to individualize and shape this program. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Any questions from the committee?
I just had a quick question. You said you have the survey data and kind of just starting to dig into it now, and I wondered, is this, do we already kind of have an idea of when we might have you back to hear more about that survey data? Or it might not have been something you were initially planning to present, but I personally would love to, to hear what people thought, if maybe we could do that at a future meeting.
Sure. I can also tell you, I'll be unpacking the results of this evaluation with our C P A C. In fact, our C P A C president did email me the date. I'll be, I will have to get you the date, because I don't have it on, on the tip of my brain right now. But in September, the first C P A C meeting is always a meeting where I discuss parents' rights, or family rights, excuse me. And then the other thing I will be doing, hopefully, it will be ready by then. My projection is to have this evaluation wrapped up by September twenty-fourth. And if you're wondering why I'm rushing and why that deadline is so soon, it's because team meetings are happening as of September. And if you have an annual team meeting in September, I'm trying to avoid having to send people back from multiple meetings to talk about next summer. Teams can make informed decisions only if we know what's going to happen in E S Y twenty-two, if we start making those decisions now. So that's the other piece. We've kind of planned for this program and meet continually throughout the year on end. I am more than happy to come back. I could talk to you about program evaluation and what else I have in store for P P S beyond that. And you're also all welcome to attend the, the C P A C meeting as well.
Excellent, thanks. And I just had one more question. Kind of vague, I guess, but in addition to things you mentioned, you know, such as the staffing shortages that you encountered, that positive change to the nursing piece, where you keep a better eye on the medical documentation, and the length of the program, I think those are the three things I heard you mention. Is there any, any sort of low-hanging fruit that you'd like to shoot for, for next year? Or would you rather kind of tackle that question after the survey data bears out?
I'll bite, because I can't help myself. I, I have an idea that I actually took from an experience I had on a personal level. And, you know, every year, we do an open house at the very beginning of the program, where families can come in. This is really the family's opportunity to kind of meet the teacher, get an idea of what that space looks like. And I'll tell you, it's mulled over by, by Tricia Ferretti quite a bit. It's very mindful which classroom goes where, what's the accessibility, you know, what happens if there's an emergency drill. These are all issues that we've worked out over the years and how we plan it. But after that point in time, we don't invite the families back. So one of the things I'm already thinking about for next summer is incorporating a family day at the end of the program, where they can come and visit our program, celebrate these children's successes. You know, due to the confidential nature of this program, I can't, you know, bring a lot of pictures and, you know, disclose identities of students. But these students deserve to be celebrated all the same, because their work is tremendous, and their families, I think, would really enjoy coming and watching and celebrating with us. So low-hanging fruit, but that's exactly something that I thought you might like to hear.
Sounds awesome.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions? All right, well, we thank you guys very much for coming in. Really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So along with some superstars from our Middleborough Public Schools, that concludes my report.
All righty. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming. So the next item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation. And I wanted to be clear before we start that the superintendent evaluation is, is a process that exists between the school committee and the superintendent, and this particular process is not open for public comment, and that's due to, I guess, employment law, basically. We all submitted to the chair, Chair Young, an evaluation, and the chair then combined those evaluations and put it together into a document. And I believe what we'd like to do here today is to accept any discussion among the committee on that performance evaluation. And in the end, I would like to have a, a motion to accept that document and to allow the chair to sign it. So that being said, I just wanted to check and see if everyone got a chance to, to look at it, and if there were any comments or questions on that. Yep, Meg?
I just wanted to point out a lot, pretty much everything in here, and think, nothing was negative. Everything was really positive in how you are really exemplary in almost every category that we have, especially this past year, where everything was changing, there were a lot of moving parts, and you really, you stepped in and you really got a hold of everything, and you made sure your team was on the same page, as much as they all could be, and just how thankful the families are and how thankful we all are, I'm sure.
Thank you. And as you know, the word "team" and collaboration was used a lot in my self-evaluation that I submitted to the committee, that, that this is not something that I do alone. This is something that I do with, with a team. And that's the only way we could make, get it done last year, was with a team of highly effective collaborative people who were able to get it done. So kudos to all of them. Some of them are sitting in the audience tonight, and many of them are, could not make it tonight, but I do appreciate that, the folks that are here. But just want to mention that, that everything I submitted to you had about, was not, it's not an I-I-I thing. It's, it's a, it's a we-we-we, it's a collaborative thing, and it's, it's really something that's very, very near and dear to me, that, that there's such a focus on our team to make it through last year and, and work towards this year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions on that? I just wanted to echo, I think I've got a chance to work with you more than ever before. Part of that has to do with the vice chair role, but the rest of it just has to do with the way that the last year worked out. And I've really appreciated learning from you and, and all the extra information you provide and the, the kind of gentle, gentle hand with the still self-proclaimed newbie. So I appreciate everything. So unless there's any additional comments or questions, then the, the vice chair would entertain a motion to approve, let me see what I write here, to accept this performance evaluation and to allow the chair to sign it on our behalf.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Teresa, second by Meg, it was close, though. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the school, school committee operating protocols. And let's just see. With this, with the school committee operating protocols, this, this can be an ongoing discussion. It's not necessarily an action item here today. Those, that document was in the Dropbox, and I, I wanted to see if there were any, was any discussion we needed to have now or wanted to have now, but this can be a continuing discussion. This was very much a, a thing that Rich, Chair Young puts together, and I would love to get his input on this as well, so. But I wanted to see if anyone wanted to talk about it now, and maybe we can discuss again at the next meeting. Okay, and just for context, the operating protocols are basically, how do we work together? What is our purpose? It, it's just a, a series of protocols that helps us to, if we have some, sort of an impasse, or some sort of a disagreement, or some sort of a confusion about what our role is, these are things that we will agree to and can help guide us and avoid delays and things like that. So if, and if there's any, any other context about operating protocols, please feel free to jump in.
I would just say that generally, this is, these are voted annually by the committee, updated annual by the committee if need to be, if need be. And these are published through the Mass Association of Student School Committees, and through their attorney, and it's vetted through their, their program, and sent to the chair, et cetera, when, when, so. And these generally are discussed as a group, and, and I would agree that it might not be a bad idea if you had the chair and, and Zeke here, so they had the full committee to, to further discuss this. But it basically does talk about who you represent, and how you govern, and how you treat each other, and how you communicate, and some basic roles of, of the school committee, which is, which, which are very important, certainly, so.
Great. So it sounds like we, I don't think we have to make a motion or anything, but we'll just discuss this again at the next meeting, and hopefully, we have a full, full group. So let's see, then that brings us to number seven, which is the Middleborough High School building project. And I wonder, Mr. Lynch, could you?
I can certainly provide an update as, as of the most recent meeting. We did meet as a board. We did have, for the first time, we did not have a quorum, so we followed it up with a sort of a, not a sort of, but we had a hybrid meeting the following week, at which time, we did have almost the full board. And we were able to navigate through a, a number of pieces. One included a large furniture piece and equipment piece for the school that was basically developed by high school faculty and administration with regard to what don't we have, what, what was in our heads, what was in the vision, what was in the design of the building that just didn't manifest itself through F F and E and, and through the procurement process of furniture and things such as that. It was an extensive item, it was, it was a high amount, but that's what contingency money is for. There's a four-million-dollar contingency money. I would say that, that that was about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar price tag for those items, but are those are those things that we need. The next thing we need to tackle is the innovation lab and some additional pieces that need to go in there. And I know that, that Mr. Brandigan and the folks at, at Compass Project Management and Fontaine Brothers are working on that, so that's the next piece. The other piece, just to continue to announce that, that the project is under budget, significantly under budget, which is great. It could end up being around ninety-seven million, as opposed to about a hundred and four million that the community voted on. So that's just a target right now that we're looking at. We thank the folks at Plymouth County for the COVID money that they have sent us, because our program was affected negatively by COVID, and they have compensated the, the town for some of those amounts. But the project is, is not on time, as you know. We are behind. We had a significant delay in, in, because of COVID. The grounds right now, the front parking lot is being developed. If you've gone by it all, you've seen the mountains of dirt. The old building was taken down, and, and the, now it's, the parking lot's being formed. There's been a delay in that a little bit because of COVID. They were supposed to get an earlier start. So we need the parking for fall activities, for fall sports and fall activities, so that area behind the school that's a big parking lot, that it will soon be the tennis courts. We've had to keep this year as tennis courts throughout the year, and that'll be developed in the spring. Once the front lot is done, then we'll be able to do the lots in the spring, the tennis courts in the spring, and finish up the, the remainder of the soccer field and lacrosse field out in the back of the building. So those pieces that are supposed to be completed soon are going to be put off until the spring, the growing season, and, and that will be completed at that time. So that's sort of an update at this point, a summary update of where we are at the building. And I'd certainly invite Mr. Branding, if there's something I missed that's major, I think I caught it all. So, thank you, so.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Do we have a date for completion of the parking lot?
October fifteenth, I believe, is the date that would be given for the completion of the front parking lot. Hopefully, they'll be, they'll be sooner than later. The other piece I did want to mention prior to, or before I finished my report on the high school, was the fact that we have had some inquiry as to the availability of the track. We do have cameras that are, that are close to being hooked up for security purposes, that's one big step. The other big step is sort of laying down the laws and the rules about, you know, things like bikes and baby carriages and things like that, that aren't, aren't allowed on the track and are prohibited from the track. So those are the other pieces that come, there's some signage involved in, in the track. And that, so that signage and the security are the last pieces to this. And obviously, the access is concerned, right, it's, it's an area of concern without that front parking lot. The idea would be when that front parking lot's done, that's the ideal access, to, to leave the facility open. But it's also, especially in the fall, is being used extensively by our athletic program, including the weekends. So that will have to balance, and, and folks in the community need to know that if there's a, obviously, a football game going or something like that, that, that the track's unavailable, even a field hockey game or a soccer game, things such as that, so.
Got it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, so maybe we'll, we'll move on to the M A S C, M A S S convention. We talked about this before. I believe registration, I believe they're still taking registration at this point.
They are, but, but the only registrations they're taking now are remote.
Ah.
So they've closed down the number of people that could be at the conference, and they've reached the limit. And if anybody wants to go, they can tend, they can attend virtually.
Got it. And Mr. Lynch, I believe that if anyone wants to attend, they should just reach out to you, any of our members?
Reach out to, to Mr. Chair Young.
Okay.
Reach out to Chairman Young, yes.
Got it. If no questions on that, then the vice chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. And just for the, if there's folks out there that, the consent agenda, we usually use it to approve minutes and warrants. And I, I think that's actually it. Do we ever have anything else under consent agenda? I think that's it, right?
Generally, yeah.
Yep, okay. So we do have an action item on here, and Mr. Lynch, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, but anytime we have any surplus equipment from the school district, we, we have to put it out there. I believe it's what, first to town departments and then to other school districts, is that right?
Right, and then we can put it up to, not other school districts, but then we can put it up for availability to anyone.
Got it.
After, after the town department say no. So this is a surplus, heavy-duty, very-large mixer for a restaurant that if nobody in the town wants, will be available. I think it may go on a sort of an eBay-type or Craigslist-type thing if anyone's interested. So they can contact James Hutchinson, who's our facilities director, if they are interested in this mixer. I'm not sure if it's still operable. It's one of those big old, I believe, it's, the brand name is Hobart, one of those big, huge mixers that would mix Congo Bar mix and brownie mix and things that we don't have anymore. Just kidding. Not really.
So we need a, a vote to approve that. So anyone like to make a? Yep, so we, yep, motion in a second to, to approve this for surplus item, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that's approved. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair? Just because we're getting towards the end of the agenda, there were some questions that came up online. If we could kind of go back to the COVID.
Okay.
That's okay, okay. So someone had asked, they had heard that the air conditioner was broken at Nichols. They're not sure if it's fixed. I don't know if that's...
I don't know if the chiller at the Nichols has been completely fixed or not. I believe it was operational. The air conditioning at the Nichols. Yeah, I, I, the air conditioner at the Nichols- Yeah, I, I, the air conditioner at the Nichols has been working because I, I do a drive-by generally every Saturday or Sunday or both, and those drainage had, fountains have been working pretty well, and especially in the humid days, and so as far as I know, the, the chiller at the Nichols Middle School is completely working.
Okay.
Where are you, Mr. Chair? Just to piggyback on that, I actually emailed Mr. Hutchinson this afternoon because I had some questions regarding the MECC chiller, and he did let me know, just for those folks out in community, that it's gone out to bid, so it sounds like it's kind of working its way to being fixed again, which is great, and that they'll just continue to use, use fans as necessary, but the hope is that that will be fixed very soon.
Yeah, and we did, we did budget for the chiller at the, the MECC with the Escher money, because it's also an air circulating system, and we were able to do that, which we put on that.
Right, hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars was budgeted for that, for that unit, so that is gone out, or will be going out to bid, we just need to get a design engineer, et cetera, so.
Got it, thank you. Someone had asked if masks, mask breaks were going to be more strictly adhered to throughout?
Yes, we're going to try to and make sure that every class has a mask break.
Okay. And then they had asked if at Nichols, they'd be changing classes or if the teachers were going to be changing?
I believe they're going to be changing classes, we're going back to that, that structure.
And then someone had asked why there's no Champions at Nichols and if there's a plan to get Champions at Nichols?
I, I would tell you this, that, that we had Champions at the Nichols when they first signed up, but the program was so.
Sparcely attended.
Sparcely attended, thank you, Sarah, that it got down to two or one students or one or two students. So we ended up taking those students and busing them down to the Berklin program and making them junior advisors, and they helped out with the younger kids, and, and got a reduced rate, I believe, something. So if there's interest in a Champions middle school program and we can get it back going again, we can certainly talk with Kari Kobaki and the Champions program, they're certainly receptive to, to such, to expanding the programs. They had a very successful summer, I would tell you that, they had a lot of students at, at the H P P program.
So if there isn't a program, can we still have those kids, maybe one or two kids become?
I believe we certainly could, so if there's a, a parent that wants their sixth grader involved in Champions, as far as I'm concerned, we won't say no, but it may involve them just hopping on a bus that ends up down at H P P.
And would they contact the person at Champions about that?
Yeah, they can contact Champions directly, yes.
And then on the bus, are students going to be socially distanced?
Students are going to be on the bus with masks, and we're not going to be requiring socially distance, just, just social distancing on the bus. If we can do it, we will. So that old saying I've used for a couple times here tonight, to the extent possible, if we can spread them out, we will, but, but we're not going to require that. That's one of the things, one of those things that we're going to relax, but they will have to have masks.
Okay, thank you, those were all of the questions.
And there will be contact tracing on buses too, if need be.
And Mr. Lynch, just to piggyback on that question, I believe that's consistent with the way we ended the year.
Correct.
On buses for social distancing, right?
Right.
Yep, okay. All right, and so we, we do have under other, we have some donations from Ohio Pile to Middleborough High School, and I believe that's a, a regular donation that we're very thankful for, and there are also a couple fundraisers for the Nichols, P T A fundraisers for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, and I believe we have to vote to approve these, is that correct?
We do not.
Okay.
If these are, if these are done by the P T A, we do not, these are informational.
Got it.
The principals approve those. So that basically goes to, if it's something that, for example, Mr. Brannigan wants to raise money for something at the high school and he runs the fundraiser, that would come through the school committee, but the P T As have their own fundraiser, and, and there are, there's a policy for that too in the school committee, in the school committee policy manual.
Yep, so I guess the only comment on that is that we're really thankful for the efforts to, to create and, and run these fundraisers, it looks like there's four at the Nichols Middle School and seven at the Mary Kay Good, so we thank the P T As for all their work on that. And that marks the end of our agenda, so unless there's anything else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you very much, thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.